I want to welcome everyone to Commissioners' Court. Before we get started, we have Dr. Tony Romans with us here. If you would, please lead us in the invocation. Commissioner McCampl, please.
I don't think it is. I don't think it is.
It should be.
I'll talk to them. Well, Father, we bow in this morning to exalt you. Father, I'm especially grateful for the privilege of invitation to enter your presence through the provision of your son. Father, we come today and we pray for the heart that's heavy, so that your comfort might be with them, the mind that's confused might find your peace, and the heart that's broken might find your calvary's love to mend and heal. Father, we come today to pray for our judge and for our commissioner. We pray, Father, for your grace and favor in their life and their work. Father, we thank you for our first responders, and we're always mindful to pray for your safety and protection for those who protect us. Father, may your grace and favor attend all that's done. May your will be accomplished, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Romans. All right. Well, the time is 9:03. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order. Do we have any citizens' comments?
No, sir.
All right. Item one. Consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court on September 7, 2021. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing none. Judge, I move we approve the Commissioners' Court session, regular session, September 7, 2021, as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. Item two is consider and take action on application for permit to dredge maintenance property located in floodplain area, Zone A, near property located at 7220 Shorecrest Way, Athens, Texas. We have with us this morning Ms. Kimbrough, our floodplain administrator. What's more do you have for us?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. The property owner is also here today, Ms. Kay Dressler from Waters Edge. Her actual address is 7218 Shorecrest Way. This is an additional piece of property that she owns that we're looking at this morning. This, her application is made to maintain and dredge an area that Commissioner McCampl and I have gone out and taken a look at.
Pardon me, that mic is not on. Would you mind pushing the button on top?
Right here.
There you go.
Cut that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Start over?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry to interrupt. Please continue.
Oh, that's okay. So, this permit is actually a permit for maintenance and dredging in an area of the floodplain, a very small area on a portion of our property located at 7220 Shorecrest Way. Commissioner McCampl and I have visited this location and taken a look and talked about the appropriate maintenance that we felt like would not harm any neighbor or any other problems that might be going on in the area. So, we presented this as a dredge, not a fill, to remove silt and remove debris from this area. I sent you all a location map that actually has the GPS coordinates with which the contractor is working. It's limited to that area. So, the standard pole harness falls is written into the permit that's under number three in section 12 warning. My copy does have the application signature and date signed by Ms. Dressler, and I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Commissioner, being your presiding.
This is something that me and Ms. Kimbrough went and viewed the property with the homeowner and rode around in the location, and I agree with Ms. Kimbrough that some dredging needs to be done on a small drainage area there beside the property owner's property, or that runs through the property owner's property that is silted in considerably. I don't think this is going to fix all the problems down there, but it will fix, it will start to fix some of them.
And that's the primary effort on this part is to at least park and curb problem being fixed, will also assist in some of the other area locations. Her problem is not what's causing their problems, but it will assist in that. So, any other questions? I think Ms. Dressler here, if anyone has a question. This permit is for a year. This is, our contractor has not started work yet, and she is in contact with him. I think the rain delays and the upcoming rain delays are somewhat of a concern about when work might be started or completed, or if it can be completed in a year.
Any other questions?
Do, this is not pertaining to them, but just for my reference. When they dredge that, will they, will they take that dirt and spread it out throughout the property, or will they, will they take it off? Are you required, is there, on your part, is there, is there a requirement that they either take, spread it off, or take it, take it off?
She can, she can use it on her property as long as it's not in the Zone A floodplain area. It would be considered a fill if it was put into, removed from one place and put into the floodplain. But we've been over that, and we've left it for demarcation lines even. She does have some barns out there that have been built up, and those were not determined to be in the floodplain at all. Now, some of the silt from those might have contributed, but not really to the extent that it is.
Are there any other questions? Now, this permit will need authorization for the flood administrator to sign, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. If there are no further questions or comments, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the application, or to grant the application for a permit to dredge the property located in floodplain area Zone A, near property located at 7220 Shorecrest Way in Athens, Texas, with the floodplain administrator's signature.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCampl, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the permit to dredge maintenance property located in floodplain area Zone A, near property located at 7220 Shorecrest Way in Athens, Texas, with the floodplain administrator's authorization to sign. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes.
Judge, may I have your patience?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
We're going to pause just a moment while Mr. Vincent gets our mic issue. Uh-uh. No, neither one of them worked. We will move forward, just ask that those speaking to be sure and speak loudly. Item three is consider and take action on request from the Elections Administration to increase pay for election workers. Ms. Lucky?
Well, I would like to request an increase for poll workers. The problem came up last week when we tried to go pay for the last election. So, last year, we paid the workers more money because we had money from the HAVA Cares funding. That ended in December last year, so we no longer have those funds. And I would just like to get it set to, if we want to increase them, if we don't want to increase them. I'm asking for $10 an hour for the judges, and $9.50 an hour for the workers. So, I kind of did a forecast out through the end of the year. I'm anticipating November to be about 37,000 to 40,000 in workers. It's just a legislative update, but we do have, it's a countywide election, so we had about 6,000 unexpected costs from these last District 10. So, I just need to figure out which way we want to go.
I need to recap for the court. During the last election cycle, of course, great concern was expressed and warranted so about COVID-19 and being able to have enough workers to actually work during the event, and money was made available through the state, through the HAVA Cares funding that allowed us to supplement their pay to encourage more participation, because we were very concerned going into the presidential election that we would be short-staffed. Well, here we're rolling around, and our current pay without the HAVA was how much?
$8.50 for workers and $9 for judges.
So, you see the concern and some of the issue. To get through this year, we're looking at an additional estimated $6,300 in expense. That's counting, as you see, the November 2 and the runoff. And that also includes the District 10.
Yes, sir.
As well.
Yes, sir.
So, it's something that we did not have an opportunity to, and actually really didn't come up during budget, because didn't realize what we were coming into with such multiple elections having here at the last minute.
Is this $9.50 in 10? Is that what we paid them with HAVA?
Yes, sir. Yes, that's what we paid them last month.
I think we should continue to pay them now. It's going to be hard enough to get, in today's times, it's hard enough to get help.
Yes, sir.
Less than $9.50 an hour, and we're already having trouble getting poll workers.
Yeah. And arguably, the, the concerns from back from November still have not abated, even though the additional funding source has. Thoughts, discussion?
When we, when we did the budget, did we just go off the $8.50 and the $9?
We did, but we've also made provisions in the contingency fund where we have additional monies during these election cycles, which next year, 2020, will be. So, we have provisions made in the 2020. Ms. Lee, believe we can find.
There's money in the contingency also for salary changes.
Oh, that's correct. I forgot about that. This is part of the steps, the step plan. We put 20,000, I believe it is, as a contingency for those unforeseen payroll expenses. Now, I agree with the Commissioner. I believe it's something that we should strongly consider and I support. Any other comments? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the request to increase the poll workers, to approve the request of increase to the poll workers. $9.50 for the workers, $10 for the judges.
Yes, sir.
Any further comments?
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
So, on November the 2nd, the training, and it says judge, is that 46 judges?
It's 46 hours.
46 hours?
Is that how I did? No, 46 judges, because you have a Republican and a Democrat judge, and we have 27, 23 locations, so it's not quite enough, but.
Yeah, and then 20, 276?
Yes.
What is that?
It should be the, yeah, it's 270 hours times 10 hours. I just didn't put a dollar sign in front of it.
No, you're fine. I mean, I was just asking, so.
Yeah, and the training, I'm trying to set up the training work, workers, and then let them go, and then do more detail with the judges, because it's a little more, just let the workers, that way we're not spending so much money.
And there's 20, 28 clerks on both sides of the parties?
I think that number might be a little, there should be more clerks on that.
And again, this is an estimated.
I understand that. I was just trying to get where we are, because.
That was the last one I threw in there.
Okay.
Does this come up for it or something? So, that one probably is a little off.
I'm good.
But I'm just, I'm going to try to get them in and out and get them their basic training, and then I'll focus on the judges.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for putting it together so quickly, given the crunch on the runoff. Item four, consider and take action on update to the Section 125 Cafeteria Plan with AFLAC. Ms. Lee, would you like to speak a little bit to it? I know Ms. Beavers is at the Sheriff's Department doing education today.
So, we haven't updated this contract since Councilman Bree, and really the only changes in this contract is to get the correct number of employees in there, and also they're offering the opportunity for those on an HSA plan to purchase hospitalization. That was not there before, but it's adding that option for those employees who are interested.
And again, this is at no cost to the county. This is a part of the cafeteria plan being made available for, for the employees. Any discussion? Entertain a motion with judge's authorization.
I'd like to make a motion to update Section 125 Cafeteria Plan with AFLAC with the judge's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Tulley to approve the update to the Section 125 Cafeteria Plan with AFLAC with the judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Item five, consider and take action on transfer request to transfer a 32-inch Vior TV from the Fire Marshal's Office to the Elections Department. Ms. Brown?
Yes, good morning. This request was made by Elections for training purposes, and the Fire Marshal's Office had a TV that they were willing to give to Elections, so that's why the transfer is being requested.
Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCampl, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the transfer of a 32-inch Vior TV from the Fire Marshal's Office to the Elections Department. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Item six, consider and take action on transfer request to transfer a truck from Constable Precinct 4 to Precinct 1 Roden Bridge. Ms. Brown?
This is Precinct 1 was in need of another truck, so Constable 4 had one, so we're just requesting the transfer.
Commissioner?
Yes, the Commissioner, we don't really like to spend money on new trucks, so we take hammerdowns. We'd rather spend money on equipment and material for the roads and stuff, and it's a really nice truck, and I appreciate it.
What year model is it?
It's a 2010.
A 2010?
It's probably the newest one I have.
Questions for the Commissioner or Ms. Brown? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the transfer request of a truck from Constable Precinct 4 to Precinct 1 Roden Bridge. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Thank you very much. Item number seven is consider and take action to impose a burn ban for Henderson County. We have a fire marshal with us, and one thing we got to say is that, you know, usually when we start talking about fire, excuse me, burn bans, it either rains or it gets real dry, so.
Good morning. I sent all of y'all an email out last week explaining, I just was looking ahead and seeing that we were increasing about 10 points a day at the time where we were at. We would have been over the 575 threshold. As of this morning, we're at 561, so we're a little bit below that, and I think it's probably the cooler temperatures that helped us out with that. The highest area we have is down in Precinct 1 is 655, so it's pretty dangerous down in that area, and then over in Precinct 3 it's really low. And again, that 561 is an average, so big county, you know, we can be real bad in one area and really good in another area, and it gives us an average. area and really good in another area, and it gives us an average of 561. I'm not, I'm not a fan of burn bans, but I do know that at this time of year, when we start getting this dry, it does start taxing the fire departments pretty heavily when they have to go out and put out grass fires. Over the last two weeks, we've had 13 grass fires in the county, and the majority of those have been within the last week. They're growing. We had about an eight-acre one out of the day over in Henderson. They're getting harder to put out. It's requiring more fire departments to respond to them to put, put them out, which has been very fortunate right now that the fires are usually starting in a small grass area and work into a wood line, which slows them way down. If it starts getting into these hay fields and stuff like that, we're going to have a problem. Personally, right now, I don't think that we need to be in a burn ban because of the 561 average. If we was, it would be in Precinct One because it's really hot, and I think we really bring it to everybody's attention that we're really close, and this is something that we need to start looking at.
Questions? Comments? Well, it is, it, well, go ahead.
Well, I don't, I don't think we're going to get a whole lot of rain out of this activity, but I think it's something we should leave on the agenda for the next court also.
I agree with you, Commissioner. It's, it's coming, but I don't think that we're going to get any, get any of it, so...
Well, it looks to the south and southeast of us. They're in the 600 and 700 range right now. So, it's creeping in, and folks need to know that it, that it's on the horizon if we don't have some type of weather change.
Yeah, and I know my office, we take five to 10 calls a day right now asking if we're under a burn ban, and dispatching them taking quite a few also. So, that kind of tells you out there in the public, they know it's getting too dry. The burners are calling and pressing.
And there's a lot of extra fuel out there from the spring and summer rains that we had, lots of growth.
Yeah. Any other comments? No action will be taken at this time. We'll keep it on the agenda, and pray for rain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, receive financial reports. We have no financial reports today. Item nine is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets, which there are none. Item 10, consider and take action on submitted contracts. There are none. Item 11, consider and take action on request of right-of-way permits. None of those. Item 12, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Have none of those. So, item 13 is consider and take action on payment of bills. Always have those.
Today, I did a printout on bills totaling $297,380 between eight days.
Commissioner Spivey?
No questions, Judge.
Commissioner Thule?
I have no questions.
Commissioner McCam?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Okay. I did notice one that made mention the auditor. Given the demands on the waste stations, that sanitation line is getting pretty depleted.
I noticed.
So, we'll have to, sure, budget amendments coming in the future, so... Other than that, I have no questions. Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills for the fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $297,380.28.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the bills in the amount of $297,380.28. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 14, consider and take action on submitted plaits. No plaits. Item 15 is open and consider bids. We have none of those. And leaves us with item 16, consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner Richardson to adjourn. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you very much for being here today.